All right, it is now seven o'clock, Thursday, June 13th, 2019. The Situate Planning Board. Thank you all for being here. I'll entertain a motion to, on the agenda.
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a continued public hearing, mixed-use special permit, Drew Company slash MBTA, 247 Driftway. Gentlemen, welcome. You're on.
Good evening. I'm turning Robert Galvin again for the Drew Company. At this point, I think we're going to turn it right over to John Drew to let him speak to you, tell you about some of the things that have happened last month. We recently got another letter from a butter and probably address that briefly.
Okay.
And then tell you a few changes to the plan.
Sure, good. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. We're glad to be back. We, in the last month since we appeared here last, have, I believe, answered most of the questions that were posed to us by our peer reviewers. We have, in front of you have our plan. We have not made significant changes to our plan since your last meeting. That's really just for reference. We've made some minor, relatively minor adjustments to our traffic, which David Black will speak to shortly. Since we last met, we've had sign-off from our engineering review. We've had no additional comments from landscaping and traffic as well. So, we believe that we're, we've answered many of the questions posed of us, projects, made changes where we need to make changes. And as I said before, I think the project has really improved over this, the course of these meetings and this review. So, really tonight, we want to just focus on areas that have changed since we last met, where we have made, again, changes or improvements. And I think, to start, I think I could just go right to those changes. If that's okay? With David, if we could put a board up to talk a little bit about traffic and circulation and some of the crosswalks, other things that we've committed and signage that we've committed to since the peer review. And David, just make sure you don't stand in front of the...
Don't see through. So, I'm glad to be in the right place tonight. So, David Black from BHB, one of the things we were asked to do last time was to look at the locations of the crosswalks on Old Driftway. We haven't looked at that. We were also asked to look at maybe the side driveway, one-way, as an inline to driveway-only. So, that's what we're showing on this plan. We decided, what we're showing on this plan is, we thought we liked the idea of, we've got, we've got crosswalks at the signal here, and then the MBTA driveway and the driveway here. We thought that keeping a crosswalk near the existing curb cut and the MBTA curb cut was somewhat close to the traffic light, and it might be better to have a mid-block crosswalk that sort of aligns with the project itself. That's not set in stone. I think we'd be, this is something we'd like to work with the time to, you know, decide where the best place is. Part of the thought was that we would move, move the crossway, crosswalk away from where the turning movements are happening. And this layout indicates that it keeps the right eye and the left eye for the MBTA. It does not allow a left turn into the side driveway. There is a, we would have signage for that. But, you know, I think we have, we like the idea of putting one of these rapid flashing blinking crossings up. They're very effective. Federal Highway got a little bit sort of cold on them for a while, but they now think they're actually a good idea. So, and we think that if we had, if we kept the crosswalk here, we think it's very close to the signal at New Driftway, to have that tightly. It would be a little bit confusing and perhaps unsafe to have a flashing walk, crosswalk near to the traffic signal itself. So, as shown, we chose a location here, which is by, you know, midway along the, along the block. I think it actually might be very useful to know what Jeffrey Dirk thinks about this. He hasn't, he hasn't seen this, but knowing his input would be very helpful as well.
Okay.
We also talked about, and we're asked as well for, in terms of the, the blinking yellow, the blinking signs for pedestrian crossing, we were asked to look at speed.
Oh, yes, speed, yes.
Signage as well there, which, which we can certainly do. I think those are some of the other recommendations from, from traffic.
The question I had on speed, which is, some of David's going to talk to your peer review people about, is, I presume the speed would be on New Driftway as opposed to Old Driftway. That's where probably needed. So, so we'd buy, we'd buy the signage, the traffic control, and install it basically to decide where the town decides is best placed.
What is the speed limit there now? I think it's 20, isn't it?
It's probably, it's 20, it's 25 probably.
20 or 25.
Coming through?
Yeah.
Wow. I don't think anybody goes that slow.
Well, no one does, but they should.
On Driftway or?
On New Driftway.
I think it's right, yeah, right here.
Okay.
We probably, we should have that.
The measured, the measured speeds are higher than that.
Of course they are. It goes without saying.
Probably 10 or 15 miles an hour higher.
Multiples.
Yeah.
The way that works, I know when I'm driving, is it reminds you of the speed and slows you down. So, I mean, that's...
You also don't need, if you've seen in Norwell, they don't have, they have signs that are actually, it's just the sign with, I think, solar powered, as opposed to having the big box on the ground that looks, balls, they have the ones, it's not kind of, it looks like a sign.
Grove Street.
I would prefer, we would prefer that type of a sign.
I think that's what we were thinking.
Okay, good, because I didn't know, you know, the...
On the, on the, on the, on the New Driftway, that's what we were thinking.
Okay.
My engineer's notes are that New Driftway is 45 per hour.
That would be the straightaway up, wouldn't it? 45 on that little stretch?
Sounds really fast.
I don't think there's another speed, I'm trying to think, is there another speed limit sign in there?
Probably not.
I don't think I've ever seen 25.
Hmm. But it shouldn't be 45. Well, we'll figure it out.
It's going to be posted, if it isn't now.
I know it's 45 out on the Driftway. That's 45.
I think it dropped to 35 in there, somewhere.
That's 45.
That's what she's talking, he's talking, right.
I have this noted as 35.
All right. Which is still 10 miles too fast.
Yes. I think...
Right, all right. Thank you.
Well, you'll have the apparatus to effect it, changes.
So, what you're proposing here is two crosswalks then, right? And then leave the third one at the corner of Old and New.
Yes, so we have, we have the crosswalk at the signal, at the New. We have cross, four crosswalks at the MBTA driveway aligning with the North driveway here. Because of just a slight realignment on the driveway there, we'd have to, we have to relocate one of those, but we'll keep it. So, this will continue to have four crosswalks. This will continue to have the two crosswalks that were there today. The two crosswalks which currently flank the MBTA exit, we would consolidate in a single mid-block crosswalk with flashing lights.
With the understanding that people cross wherever they want to.
Unfortunately.
That's the way it goes.
But if it's heavy traffic, they'll, they'll cross there.
You know, I think, I think, you know, clearly the MBTA entrance is a clear, is a very strong design. And my sense was that, depending on people who start, no pun intended, drifting off the driftway.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
And then on the one-way, David, you want to talk about that?
Oh, yes, this is, this, this recognizes that, this is based on the one-way. It's showing a one-way entry here, but not allowing a left turn into that driveway because it's, it's really too close to the turning lane for the, for the traffic signal. So, you would be able to turn right into this, but not left.
You didn't really expect that to be the primary entrance though, right?
No, it's very, it's low volume. This is very low volume, the middle one. This is really where, you know, this is obviously the busier of them.
When you say the middle one?
The, the new, the driveway which goes between the two buildings here.
That won't have a lot of traffic.
For that one.
Yeah.
That driveway that services the buildings, the residents.
Right. I was thinking at the far end is the...
Is the main, the main entrance, yes. And next, yeah.
This one has, this has pretty low, if we were to allow a left turn in here, pretty low, because people already pass this one. So, they, you know, they obviously have many ways to get into the side.
And signage will help a lot there as well. We're going to be directing people towards the main entrance really through signage. I don't think it's going to be residence only, but I think it's going to really look...
Yeah, because you don't really want to make the center way kind of a, a main thoroughfare, right?
Exactly.
It actually stops that now, so if someone does come in from north, they have to basically turn around and come back out.
Can you say that again? If someone does what?
If someone does come in from the, into the center, they have to turn around and come back out.
Okay, okay.
And we've, you know, the retail parking ends as you get closer to South Lane, so we think that helps as well. And they'll be clearly marked and labeled and striped.
It was a recommendation that came from your group looking at it, is basically thinking was, it wouldn't impede the flow and basically would sort of direct traffic in the right direction.
Yes. I agree.
I think the other thought there is that this aligns with kind of the central pathway through the side.
The sidewalk, the crosswalk.
Okay. Thank you. A quick question, looking at this new presentation. In the back corner, you have a retail rest to, what is in the...
The rid, the two little rids.
The two little rids.
Are those parking spaces?
Those are parking spaces in the center?
No.
On the back.
Right here, John, over here.
Those are, those are meant to be basically extra spaces.
Yeah, but we've, we had, because of the, this retail over here, at the, that building F, we had to pick up, as per the town zoning, that we had to add.
They're parking spaces.
They are parking spaces. We had to add two there.
It's parallel parking back there though.
All right. Anything else that you would like to?
I think we've discussed with the town mitigation and working with the town on that as well. I think we have some, you know, ideas that are moving forward, but we, we still, you know...
Little bit to do.
We have a little bit to do. But I just, you know, for everyone, that that is, we are working with the town towards resolving that.
Do you want to address the letter that we received, or?
If you want, I'll address portions of it. The engineering portions of it will probably result in some minor modifications to the plan.
Okay.
I'll skip down to, and I'll just tell you the numbers that I'm going to address.
That's fine.
These are kind of legal or bylaw in nature.
Yep.
Item number four from the letter dated June 2nd. By the way, I got this letter sent to me by Mr. Morris this afternoon. I think it had been sent over to my clients yesterday, so we scrambled a little bit to answer it. But first of all, relative to the density of the units, we think not only is the density permitted because we're allowed 17 units per 40,000 square feet when we demonstrate significant public benefits, but the planning board also has the authority to allow up to 20 by a waiver. So, regardless of how it's viewed, we think we qualified and the density is appropriate. With respect to lot, item number five, section 454A, dealing with the lot yard, lot and yard areas required shall not include part of lot that is required by any other building of use. I think we've always maintained that this project is a mixed-use development. It has a retail element, a commercial element, a residential element, and parking is essential. And essentially a part of this use and the MBTA area is just an extension of a use that's permitted and it's part of this mixed development project. It's all owned by our entity, and as a result of that, we think it's not other uses, it's all one use. So, we don't believe that is an impediment. With respect to item number 11, parking in the front yard along the Driftway, again, here, the planning board has specific authority to waive front yard setback requirements. And the planning board feels very strongly about not considering that waiver. We could certainly modify the parking to make it smaller parking and maintain that yard requirement.
Which parking are we talking about?
This is along the Old Driftway.
The parallel parking.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, building, oh, building off.
Building up.
It's along the New Driftway, I'm sorry. This is quick for me, so I'm doing the best I can to scramble.
It's this one? Yeah, way in the back?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, building up.
It's the front two spaces, we think, that are affected on the, on the red and blue. But you do have, it's, you know, it's under your jurisdiction to waive that, otherwise what we do is elusive space in the top and slide it back.
So, with respect to building F though, the board has the authority to vary the front yard setback requirements. So, to the extent that you wish us to do that, we could eliminate those parking spaces and maintain that requirement. The next requirement is five, six, number 12, 568C1, specifying that buildings must be located between 10 and 25 feet from the public way and streets. Again, our building is approximately 30 feet back, or, I'm not sure exact set work. We don't think that this number one fosters the walkability of the site to move the building closer to the street.
Which is what we had wanted in the beginning.
Right.
We didn't want all that pavement in the front of this and parking.
Right.
But rather bring it forward.
Right. So, again, we'd like to leave it exactly where it is.
And I think that that would be wonderful if you did.
Okay.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but...
Okay. I'll just go through them quickly. These are the ones that I think are somewhat legal in nature. Item number 14, that is a bylaw requiring, requiring buildings within the overlay district that are facing a public street to be no more than 120 feet wide. I think they're accurately citing the bylaw provision. Building B is actually slightly larger than the 120 feet of width. If we have to, we'll modify the building and lop off the 10 additional feet that's required. It'll probably result in a loss of a couple of units in that particular building, which could be added to another building. The building as we have right now, and you've seen in the plans, is actually very symmetrical the way it's located, and the design is actually pretty good. But if the board wishes us to do that, we would certainly modify the building because we think the butter is correct. I don't know what that gets the butter, but it impacts our project, so if we are required to maintain that, we certainly will.
If I could speak to officially architectural point of view, when Jim's here, when we went through the review period, so we had three meetings with them, this, this entrance was popped over, and it was done to create a symmetry between B and C. And it was done literally kind of as part of the give and take with the committee. So, that's why the, roughly 10 feet we added for the air and the staircases in back. So, it was, it was a reflection of basically what people wanted to, us to do with the buildings coming along the front, the front of the street. So, we are, we recognize that we're over by roughly, I would say, Jim, about 10, maybe max, 10 feet, maybe 8 feet. So, over the 120. That's the only place where that issue basically occurs, is on building B. But it was, it was done literally as part of that review process.
So, I think it's worth noting that...
So, building C's smaller?
Yes.
C's small.
Okay. With N C are, are symmetrical, and what we were trying to do was create a portal and a gateway by using the foyer for the building entrances. And we very much wanted to cluster and get the entrances out where we could get a street address, and you can see on the site plan how that, where they come out and they butt the sidewalk, the public way. And then they create this pathway through, which then continues up, changes grade, raises up to the center way, crosses over and ties into the links for the entry foyers for building D and E. So, what we're, we were really trying to do on the elevations of the mass of the building was highlight kind of those entry levels for pedestrians along, make them identifiable along Old Driftway. So, we're not adding to the overall length of the whole building, it's just the element of a stairway, which is part of the element of the foyer, the roof wrapping around and terminating at the, at the ebra stair.
But building C is, is within it, it's just that building B, and it was done for that though, so this was the...
So, the next item is item number 15, encouraging shared driveways and parking lots between adjacent properties. This might kind of get to the heart of what maybe the issue is here. There's been discussions between the Drew Company and Mr. Tedeschi, which, because there is no easement, but there was a curb cut into the MBTA parking lot, and we have not been able to come to any type of an agreement to maintain that in the proposed development. And again, the bylaw doesn't require any sharing of parking, and we're not really sure what they're going to do, or whether that even makes sense for the two projects to be connected. So, at this particular stage, we don't think that there's any bylaw provision that prevents what we've shown here. And it's possible that further discussions could result in some type of an easement, but, you know, that, that isn't, that hasn't happened, and we don't know what they're proposing for the final use of the property, other than it would be a project that would be permissible. So, that, that is not something we've been able to come to agree with, but we don't think it's an impediment for the board. Other issue is number 20, maximum height of a building. We think that we've got a building height that complies with the requirements of the bylaw, and we think that's consistent with what the planner, the planning department has been recommending to you as well. Those were the major ones that we have. Oh, 21, sections 566 and 767, that has to do with building F and the fact that there are two curb cuts on the New Driftway within 200 feet of one another. We think this makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons. We've modified this to allow it this way. If we're obligated to modify it again, we'll have to close that secondary access up and just have one, which affects the functionality of building F, which is no longer a drive-thru, it's just a pull-in.
And the other issue too is, you can only take a right going out of either driveway.
Right turn in and right turn out.
That's right. So, I mean, that was for, we had discussed that, and that was for really a safety issue. No one's to take a left.
So, I mean, these are issues I think that have been raised, because there are things that are being asked of us that we haven't been able to agree to, and I, we don't think they ultimately affect the viability or the appropriateness of the plan before the board. But with the exception of the 120 feet, which we would modify if we were required.
On the engineering, Joe can speak to the engineering issues that were called out and wanted adjusted.
Sure, yeah, I can, I think items 23 through 40, Joe Anderson will be willing to relate to a lot of the stormwater calculations, and some issues, questions about test pits. But I think we can address, I don't feel like any of these are things that we can't, you know, come to agreement with, address or make small modifications necessary to make them fit. So, I think we would do that and prepare a formal response to that needed and submit that.
Okay.
And there was one other issue, Joe, that we discussed today, which I think we were connecting our sidewalk on the south side to the existing sidewalk. And in doing so, we did touch the edge of Mr. Tedeschi's property. That's easily solved, we simply won't make that, we'll cut a sharp edge, we won't make the circle. So, we don't have to touch, touch his property. Is that correct?
What number was that? Is it on this list?
Which number was that? I know it was there because we talked about it. I don't have the head in front of me, I'm sorry.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Right, okay.
That's the side distance.
Okay.
It's actually number nine. It just talks about the erosion control. We do have some silk sock and silk sack that you would put in like existing drainage prep basin that protect it during construction. So, we did show a few of those on the button property. Just showing them there to protect during construction, that's the idea.
What's the situation about the electrical lights on number 10?
Good job.
Sure, yeah, I mean, we still have to figure out the lighting of our lighting plan, but I would think maybe a temporary disconnect. I believe it's regarding the light posts in, on the property. That's my understanding. So, there's some MBTA light posts that are on Mr. Tedeschi's property. So, we are proposing some rerouting of the electric, we can figure that out, minimize the downtime of that, that those lights need. But, you know, we're going to work that out once we get into a more detailed design of our, the electrical, and we can figure that part of it out.
Is that something you work out with the MBTA?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing some replacing of actual lights to meet the new standards of MBTA.
I mean, as far as pre-construction, we owe that, you know, a plan to the town, that's, that will obviously submit it.
I should just, I should just note for number eight, that, and I should have mentioned that when I was talking, the sight line easement issue goes away with the one-way entry. It's not needed.
I do have confirmation from Jeff Dirk that that goes away with the one-way entrance.
Okay. Just, just from my indication, you hit a number of selected items here. The ones you didn't hit are, you're going to address just as part of this engineering review or whatever? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Response.
We'll probably provide you a letter.
Yeah, no, that's fine. You were sort of picking and choosing, so I'm just trying to...
Those are the legal ones, and then engineering was separate.
Okay. One of the things I might suggest as part of the response to this is, you know, there were places where you'd indicated you might want a waiver from the planning board. So, I think you should indicate those places as you respond to this.
Comments from the board? Will you reply to them exactly as they would, you know?
Yes, in order.
In order, thank you.
Just like we did for the...
For tonight, we're just kind of, we're picking, we think of the...
Highlights.
Highlights. The biggest issues are...
Few things I'm not sure we, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just, I just got to just add that, that waiver should include all of the waivers that are looking for, rather than the ones just referred to in this letter.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, good point, Bill. Full list.
Ben?
I don't have anything on this stuff.
Many.
I'm just going back to my notes from the last meeting. We talked about mailboxes and delivery. How's that being done?
We'll give you, Jim, on the mailboxes, Jim, in delivery. We were putting mailboxes in each, in each building.
In the... In the foyers?
In the foyers.
Foyers. And, but I think that, we just need to resolve that with the postal service. Listen down at the post office on that, what they like to receive.
So, they're not these like street-mounted, you know?
We're going to have them inside the buildings.
And the retail will be directly to the retail buildings or something?
That's the plan. The other part is that we'll build a box room, which you have to, inside the foyer too, for these Amazon boxes and whatnot, and coolers.
You're going to have to make your buildings bigger.
It's actually, it's a big problem, and it's a challenge.
This is like my house, you're going to need a lot of space.
Amazon has a service now that will, they'll come in, they'll install the boxes for you, and they, you could kind of...
Oh, really?
It's pretty neat, yeah. It's pretty neat, yeah.
As long as you get Amazon.
Right.
Let's see, we talked about heating, whether it was top exhaust or side exhaust?
That's a good question for.
Come on.
Jim?
I'm sorry, could you?
Heating.
Top exhaust to side exhaust?
Oh, yeah. I think right now we're evaluating two different systems. We're just engaging with the MVP and fire protection engineers on a specific basis as the plan is coming down to what it's going to be. So we'll have kind of a clear definition of how the system will be ventilated. Our gut feel is that it's going to go up as opposed to sideways.
I think that would be preferred so that you don't see these things sticking out the walls and stuff, right? But I think we asked this last time, I've just fallen.
I don't recall the question.
We missed it, I'm sorry.
Then we talked about noise control from the condensers. Had you, had you done any more thinking about that?
I think what, it's kind of twofold. We created a, a false roof that's on the top of the roof that's more architectural and it's a visual barrier so you don't see the condenser units. And it also reflects sound. So the sound's going to go up, you know, which is as opposed to having condensers and machines on the ground that are, you know.
Will that be the case for all of them? Retail included?
Yes.
Okay. We talked about handicap access. I don't know if we resolved those.
I thought we did.
I think we did. We had to indicate on one of our.
Yeah, I think, I think we talked through that.
Made some changes there too.
And then you were talking about trash management for the retail.
Right. Limited hours, basically limited delivery hours and also we've been asked to look at limited, controlling hours to pick up trash as well. So we said we'd put that into a management plan submitted.
That's also.
So that's what you're going to do? You're just going to limit pickups? But it's, is it going to be daily?
It, it, I don't.
I'm just, I'm wondering how much it's going to sit, right?
On the housing situation, it's probably weekly, not daily.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking more the retail.
Retail, depending on the use. If it's, if it's food related, it's daily and if it's not food related, it's probably weekly. It probably will be.
That makes sense.
On Building A, we have a dedicated service lane that comes off North Road. So that goes directly in the dumpster would be there and access, direct access to the storage areas and if there's kitchen or whatever, you can see it on.
I was just thinking particularly of, you know, food waste and that kind of stuff and not having it sit around.
Where would the dumpsters or trash receptacles be in the residential units?
We hit, after a while.
One in the back here, right?
Yeah, we talked about.
Okay.
I think that's, that's a dumpster, right?
We do show.
Little.
They're rectangle.
Okay, got it.
These right here?
Yes, that's.
Great, thank you.
And also between Buildings B and C, as I put around the corner.
B and C.
B and C. And then each of these buildings.
Let's see the ones between B and C.
Most people, between, Jim, between B and C, you can point out where they are there.
Are they these white boxes?
They're white boxes. There's a staircase going up into the right inside.
They're labeled on sheet C7.
Yeah. And then there's one next to Building E. That one too?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. And then it's the retail.
Most people, they'll either leave through the garage in their automobile or they'll be walking, but we put them at the exit. So it's kind of a quick drop-off on the turnway for the main lobby areas.
You also asked us about basically delivery for, for the retail as well. And we've agreed that we're going to limit the hours of, that they're there, coordinate with, you know, off-peak time for the train in the morning and evening. And they'll be clearly marked and it'll be in the agreement with the tenant as well on when they can, things can be delivered.
And you were talking about limiting some of these spaces as loading spaces?
We have.
In the front there?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I see it, three spaces.
So those will be during certain hours. Okay.
Who enforces that?
The town will enforce that. That's, that, the, the, on all driftway, those are your spaces.
Then we talked a little bit about irrigation. So just how do you plan to, I'm assuming there's landscape in here, so how do you plan to manage that?
Yeah, I think we're going to provide, there's no irrigation provided, no underground irrigation. So we're just going to use drought tolerant type plants and let them pick certain things that will be aesthetically pleasing either way, you know, if there's drought, they'll, they'll be, you know, let it drain or whatever. It may be, you know, aesthetically.
But you're not going to need any water?
We, we're not proposing any, any watering, no.
I assume the first part of the landscape contractor's bid that would include like water establishment phase.
You need to establish the.
But they'll use a truck or something.
Yeah, that's part of the specifications, but after it's established.
And that water will be all trucked in? When you're establishing them, that'll, that'll all be trucked in?
That'll be part of the landscape contractor's, his contract.
So he'll have to get it in somehow.
If it's trucked in, it won't be.
We're not using.
We'll not use town water.
Yep, we won't use town water.
Did you consider rainwater recapture?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we decided.
There's no place to do it or?
It didn't seem to make, make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
You know, what you would need to do that, package and whatnot.
And then maintaining it as time went by and who would be responsible?
Yep.
We had, we had, Matt and Jim, we had looked at sister ends, we had talked about that here. We talked about it actually with the design review group. And the landscaping, the engineers come back on the landscaping plan felt that if we use the right materials, we're not going to, in fact, we don't irrigate, we don't, we don't need that. So that's why we stepped back. We had looked at basically positioning them as sister ends by the side of the building or something. I suppose we could always consider coming back to them at some point, but for the moment we're hoping to do the landscaping in such ways that it's not required.
And now would somebody in the spring put in some flowers or whatever just to beautify and along the front or how would that work?
I expect so, yes. I like to look beautiful.
Trump's part of the landscape plan, whether they get planted, you know, replanted every year. I mean, that's, we typically don't get into the long-term maintenance of that, but our original landscape plan will be full, implanted, acceptable.
It'll be maintained though.
Yeah, perfect.
This is right on the way between John's house and work. First thing in the morning.
We'll have, I'm sure we'll have.
You're going to have to put a condition in that you can't move.
With the landscaping for us matters a great deal. I mean, if you look at what we're surrounded by, you know, by a transfer station, by a concrete pipe company, by parking, the landscaping in this area is very, very important to us.
Oasis here.
Yeah, it is an oasis.
One other question, you said you hadn't as of the last time we met, hadn't closed on parcel yet. Have you closed? Do you?
I don't mean to laugh, it's just that we, we paid it twice, we paid the MBTA to extend this, the closing and now they have extended themselves for the last few months. So it's the end of this month.
End of this month, done.
End of this month.
That'd be nice, really, really, really nice. Yeah, it seems kind of silly that we did that. But I think we've already received draft documentation, so we're going through that. So we don't have, anticipate any problems for the end of the month.
Because maybe there's an agreement on a sale and purchase sale will work this time, so.
Okay, great. Okay, Steve?
Those were my follow-up questions.
Bill?
I'm also.
Patty?
I'm also, thank you.
Okay. Ben?
I guess, I guess one question, if you could explain, is this town really, and you kind of got, got into when you said you evaluated rainwater catchment and things like that as, and I think this came up during a public comment, like one, one of the informal meetings or something, but this town really does, we don't really have a lot of green buildings or like sustainable, what I would consider sustainable development. Could you just talk a little bit now that this is moving more from like conceptual architecture to actually building plans, a little bit about what sort of maybe, or if you are going to employ some green building strategies and any sort of environmental management systems in terms of like reducing water use and things like that?
Yeah, I think we're putting a lot of emphasis on the envelope itself, kind of the construction materials and the means and methods for constructing the skin and the fenestration and the roof. Roof is kind of a critical piece. So we're focusing on that with our engineers. And the idea of the site plan where we're creating fairly dense spaces for people, open spaces with the plan by the way the buildings are organized and the open spaces, I think that in itself gives us an opportunity to, to plantings and landscape that can be kind of amplified in its importance. You know, we're not kind of have big lawns and we're not kind of spreading things out. You know, it's around public spaces and pedestrian, right? So the building envelope is, you know, critical and that's what we're focusing on.
Is that a, is that, have you gone to greater lengths for like insulating value and those kinds of things or is it still sort of standard, you know, R values and that kind of stuff?
I think we're, we're evaluating that based on the expense of what it creates versus kind of how it.
Well, I'm talking more about the sustainability.
I know, I think all of our projects are LEED certified basically, so it's to some, some degree. So I, we'll be looking, I don't, I just.
Yeah, that's more my, yes. That was going to be my next point. Have you looked into any sort of accreditation programs?
We have, right now where we are with the, with the contractors, we're just not there yet. We priced out kind of, Jim priced it out at a certain kind of level, but that's where we get into now with our, with our.
Right.
We're LEED gold with both buildings and both are apartment buildings. We have one in construction, one finished.
Yep.
And we're the first, I think the first LEED gold apartments in Boston. There's now some that follow us, but we'll, we'll do the same. I'm not guaranteeing LEED gold, but.
Right, right. I just think.
Only because of the.
As long as you're looking at it, I think, you know, if it's silver or whatever.
So we can do silver, I think, we can, we can, we can profit the silver. But the idea would be that, again, in the bathrooms, the showerheads.
Flows.
Flows and various things like that, all of which makes sense.
Yeah, I think any sort of accreditation that you could, could get would be, would be really good for your project, but also just an example for others in this community.
We'd also like to look into, again, we don't have a restaurant done, but I'd like to see if we could look into sort of the whole question of the trash and the recycling and various things like that, but also the oils and various things like that if we can recycle and recycle them. So I mean, it's, it's where the world's going and where it should go, so.
But you'll be looking at low-flow fixtures, all that kind of stuff?
No, you know, people do sneak in and chase the showerhead after they move in, but some people don't.
And people come to expect that, especially we're going to be asking a little bit more than the kind of market we hope, we're demanding more market. So it's very much expected, not just because we want to do it, which we do, but it's also become, people, they're going to pay more, they expect to get, to be qualified.
So we will, yes.
All right, thanks.
I have one question. You were talking about handicap before. Is there any unit set specifically for handicap people?
There will be.
I'm sure.
We have to.
They have to be because of the number of units, et cetera. They have to meet the MAB requirements.
If handicap people don't occupy them, then they can be.
Yeah, yeah. I thought we had discussed it, but I just wanted. Aaron, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I, I think they've said it all. I mean, our consulting engineer had on his last report basically found everything acceptable or that F4 could be conditioned. And I think that many of the items, that they've addressed some of the items in the Morse letter that can be conditioned or, you know, a revised set of drawings can easily handle most of these issues.
Okay. Anything else from the board? No. And this is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience have anything they would like to say? Mr. Morse?
Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering, representing John Tedeschi, the new budding property owner. You know, we wanted to express, we do support this project. We've never spoken against it previous to the letter that we had sent in with our most recent concerns. Our concern since day one really has all been about the access. Mr. Tedeschi has plans ultimately to develop the property at the corner now to the Celtic Pause area. We had expressed to the town planner, we had expressed to the Drew Company our desires to share an access or a curb cut of some kind with the Drew Company project. As you've just heard and discussed, access off of the driftway, which is where the Celtic Pause access currently is, you know, you are limited with your turns. The property does have a current curb cut onto the MBTA parking lot, which gives it the benefit of going out to full driftway and having the light so that you can make the left turn. With this proposed project, that access is cut off entirely. I've seen the planning board stress to applicants before on several other projects, the desire to work together and make projects as beneficial as can be for funding property owners. We would ask that, that that be reviewed again a little bit. We hear, you know, regarding Building F and the application of having two curb cuts associated with Building F, that will further hinder Mr. Tedeschi's property as when he comes forward with his project, he'll have to be 120 feet from that additional curb cut. So it's something that really needs to be addressed. We had reached out to the Drew Company engineers and the response was no, there was no rebuttal or dialogue. We did share our plans with them, where we might access, but there was no counter, there was really no discussion. So we really appreciate the board helping us along that path. The issues that I addressed in my letter or brought up in my letter, you know, those have been there since, since day one essentially. We've never brought them up, we've never been against the project, we want it to succeed, it will complement the Tedeschi property, we hope the project is successful. We thought through the diligent efforts of our town planner and the peer review engineers that some of these things would have been brought up. We know that the projects go through very thorough reviews and as Mr. Galpin just kind of outlined through my letter, there's maybe six or seven zoning related items that you're going to need to grant waivers or variances on. I've never seen this board grant a zoning variance for front yard setbacks associated with a new building on any of the other village business or the district projects. So I think it needs to be clear what you're approving and what variances are being required. The other items have to do with the, with the drainage. We're asking that the project be reviewed in the way that any other project would be reviewed. But our primary concern since day one, the item that we'd really like addressed is the traffic access at that corner.
Well, I think that with the different reviews that we have going, I think the issues that you have brought up will be more than well addressed. I understand that the issue as far as access is concerned, from Mr. Tedeschi's property, I drove down there tonight and for the first time I saw that curb cut. And I've toolled up and down the driftway more than once over the years and I never realized that there was a curb cut there mainly because there was a dumpster in front of it. Or something that I never realized that it was a throughway. Does Mr. Tedeschi have an easement to access over that parking lot?
No, he doesn't. This is a scenario that would be very similar to what the board required at Fifty Country Way, where we were hindering Morning Glory's parking lot, for example. The board requested specifically that the developer of Fifty Country Way provide 10 parking spaces on their private property to help the Morning Glory's property. I think this is a scenario where.
I'm not sure I agree with that. No, they had existing parking and that's what stayed. That's what stayed.
That's what stayed.
Nothing more was added to it.
That's correct.
Other than to have access to go around it. So we're not going to get into this he said, she said, or whatever. Hopefully, things can be worked out. I think Mr. Galvin and the Drew people have indicated that they're willing to talk, but this is not going to be a game changer. This is a project that's been in the works for over a year. And. be a game changer. This is a project that's been in the works for over a year. And I think it is very beneficial to the town of Situate. And we would really, really want it to go forward. If Mr. Tedeschi submitted some type of a plan that we had eyes on, it said nothing to me in terms of, with no elevations, there was nothing, just a rectangle. So, I don't know how far down the road you are with whatever your project is. However, we are not going to hold these people up. We want to get your stuff together.
Understood. We have been holding off awaiting your new bylaw. We are moving forward with the new bylaw design. We don't intend to make a game changer. We believe this project is very well thought out, very well designed. We just think there are a couple of minor tweaks that could be made for the benefit of all.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris.
I would, I would point out that before I would do anything with sort of common access here, we would need to know what the plan is, because I'm not sure we want a lot of traffic through this spot here, right? So, and I know you're thinking of something, but I don't know what it, I have no idea what it is, right? And so, it's very hard to carve out anything for future while we consider the traffic volume, because this is not the place we want a lot of traffic volume, right? Not into the residential section. We want it all to be down at this North Road end. So, I would also say that plays a very large part in, in sort of what, you know, what we would even think about in terms of access out here.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything else that we need to, we gave you two hours and we're 15 minutes into it. We just sort of, nobody else?
Let's see, did we address everything that came in from the town engineer, or from the town review on the Horsley-Witten letter?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's a number of issues that on the engineering peer review, which it was engineer peer review according to the standards of every project, the latest peer review, everything can either be, has been addressed, or can be conditioned.
And can we point out that, what are the conditions we're talking about here?
All right, so if we're, the Merrell letter was dated June 6, 2019.
Let me get to, I got so much paper here. I guess that's in my inbox. Yeah, I think that's where I have it.
Well, they talk about compliance with the stormwater management standards, and they talk about, they're treating their water on site, and they, they believe an inspection report is required to evaluate the existing water quality treatment system. And we agree with that, and we will condition that the inspection report be received prior to construction. If any changes are necessary, they'll have to be enacted. But the project is treating the stormwater on site. This is an off-site mechanism that treats stormwater for both the east parking lot and the west parking lot. They have attempted to get this done, and we, I think we can condition that. So, that's, that's one item that I would recommend conditioning.
I'm sorry, Karen, I'm probably three steps behind you here.
Okay.
So, we would condition that there's an inspection that's done prior to the start of construction?
Yes, of the off-site stormwater.
Okay. And then, that would, the condition of that inspection would be that whatever comes up would then have to be addressed before we start construction? I mean, I don't, I don't know what can come out of the inspection, that's what I'm thinking.
I don't know what can come out of the inspection, but-
Is that, is that what-
Primary wanted to have-
It's a water quality unit on the MBTA, so it handles all the runoff-
Yeah.
The car parking lot. So, we're, we're treating that runoff in our own water quality system-
Yeah.
Bio retention areas we're proposing, so we're technically providing some treatment before it goes into this water quality unit. So, that's the idea is that-
But you would inspect that water quality-
We would inspect that unit, or we would have an inspection report, we'd have to coordinate with the MBTA-
Yeah.
To get access or have someone get access to that unit.
Okay. And in your experience, like, once you inspect them, what, what's like the worst thing you can find?
It's sediment buildup. It could be sediment buildup, it needs to be backed out.
Needs to be cleaned, basically. But there's not many other moving parts or anything?
Yeah, as far as I know, what I know about it, yeah, I don't know the exact details of what's there, so that's part of just finding out exactly what type of unit is, how it works, and then if you can get it cleaned out.
And will that be used as part of construction stormwater management?
It's, so we'll have set construction stormwater practices and, you know-
Right. But will you, does it ultimately dump over to that? Is that where it goes?
Ultimately, all the water, yeah, goes to that.
Okay.
So, that was one item. The next item was that, that they do include a construction sequencing and staging on the plans. They have some updated, they have some sediment and erosion control on the plans as well, and that is going to be refined in the next, in our, in a construction set of drawings, and we're going to ask to review that. And we're going to ask that the NIPDIS permit and SWIP plan be made, it's part of the conditions, that everything has to be in compliance with that, which is basically what you've done with your other projects-
Right.
Toll Brothers, et cetera, so that all the SWIP stuff is part of this erosion control and construction, and we get your, you get your SWIP reports weekly.
Yeah. Okay. I think I would point out also that that's extremely important, we get the construction stormwater management done right, because we've had many problems with those kinds, including that Toll Brothers. Could you, could somebody just sort of explain the basic construction staging or process here, kind of how you plan to build it out?
I'm not sure we've really gotten to a ton of detail, but what we show on our drawings, we have a sheet C4, we're showing stockpile and staging areas, and the-
I'm really talking about just the construction of the buildings and stuff. Are you starting with like D and E and working your way towards the street? How's, how's that gonna happen?
That we haven't finalized. We're selecting a contractor-
Uh huh.
And we have not finalized that. We'll give you a construction plan. What we've been asked previously, what we plan to do is do the whole project at once. So, it's a phase, it's not a phase project.
Okay.
And as for the MBTA, we've discussed the MBTA has maintained 55, 50 parking spaces on the site for them-
Okay.
While it's going on, so we can use the rest of the laid out area in construction, so we resolve that. As to, we would start within the, and also quite frankly, we do a construction plan, as part of that construction plan, we'll also address trucks coming to the site, coming through the tile, various things like that, so all be addressed.
Yeah, we, I was more interested in how the retail plays into the rest of it, but if you're building it all at one time-
It should be all done.
That, we've had that trouble before, too.
Maybe, I mean, it may be, within the buildings themselves, it may be finishing off some buildings while the retail opens, that type of thing. But generally, it should be, it's a one-time opening project.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so standalone document for O and M plan, which we have, oftentimes we attach them to decisions.
Yep.
We, we've asked the Drew Company to just provide a statement of how the MBTA came up with this amount of spaces that they need. And-
Good luck with that.
We'll be happy to give you a statement.
I mean, so that, the planting plan, we have a planting plan that's shown here. It lists suggested plant species. We're going to ask that the final planting plan be submitted prior to implementation.
Okay.
I mean, they do show, they show stuff that meets the zoning bylaw, but we'll ask that to, for that. We're going to ask that a photometric plan be submitted and, you know, prior to construction, and we will condition that all the light fixtures be, you know, cut off light fixtures so that they don't shine light on abutting properties.
Yeah. They'll do what the commuter rail did in their yard.
We've asked that we get a copy of the sewer approval prior to starting construction. We, we will condition, the snow storage is shown on the plan, and when it has to, when it has to go off-site, it'll meet all federal, state, and local regulations. We've asked that, we're going to condition, which we have done this on several other projects, that test pits be done prior to, at the beginning of construction to verify where the groundwater is.
And will that, is that sort of limited to a particular time of the year, or is that just whenever, just before they start? In other words, do we need to hit a high groundwater month or something like that, or is this, it's not quite-
I mean, they stated, I mean, we, our consulting engineer has noted that, Horsley-Witten has stated that the depth of groundwater is 21.5 feet, and he just wants the soil testing to occur during construction, just to verify everything because of the bio retention components as well. So, all of that will be conditioned. We, we don't like to condition that, but when all else fails, we've done it on several projects, we've done it on several projects.
We have previous soil data for the whole parking lot that we were able to access, so.
From the MBTA?
Yeah. Previous, we were able to reference for-
Okay. And how old was that data? It was when they built the parking lot?
It was when they did the initial feasibility, I think, the first round of proposed development there, a couple of years ago, I think. I don't know the exact date.
Three or four years ago.
Yeah, three or four years ago.
Yeah. So, are, are Merrells okay? They've seen the data? They're okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just bas, going off their report. They've also recommended, and we're going to condition, that the whole new Driftway, the Stockbridge Road, that the old Driftway, it'll all be coal planed and resurfaced as part of the construction on that, and that the granite, existing granite curb be, you know, reused and reset. Any granite curb on site be reused and reset where it's not damaged.
Okay.
And the plans do show that at this point in time. Those were the items in the Merrell report that were, that can be conditioned.
Condition, okay. Okay, and so the only one that sounds to me like it might be a little sort of tricky is gonna be the inspection of the existing receptor. So, I guess the expectation would be if you find, something has to be done, we would want it done before we start construction, start really, you know, dumping more storm, maybe concentrated stormwater into there too. But, that's fine.
I mean, I think we can get into discussions, I mean, like, as with Toll Brothers now, Toll Brothers is retaining all their stormwater on site-
Uh huh.
During construction. That may be something, that may be desirable here. Toll Brothers is using that water to do wetting down the roads, you know, for all of their construction purposes, Toll Brothers is using the water in their temporary-
Would you have much in the way of fill coming in here, or any of that? Is, is the grade changing much here? It's still got this uphill thing-
It's a cut.
It's a cut, okay. So, are you disposing of fill then, or of material? Is that what you'll be doing? You'll be trucking it out?
On all sides.
Yeah, okay.
This one at least has the advantage of being on a major road and the rotary very close by, and, you know, some major routes, you know, 3A, 123 right there-
Yeah, every truck comes through there anyway.
Versus Toll Brothers where, you know, you're going down-
Yeah.
Some of the side streets, so immediate route.
There are a lot of trucks come out of our neighbors.
Yeah, the main drag there.
Well, also you have Situate concrete pipe.
Right.
Yeah.
I was thinking more about just managing the soil erosion, make sure it doesn't end up on the street.
Washing it on the street.
They'll, they'll be sweeping the street a bit, you know, all part of the SWIP plan.
Do we want to have anything in terms of having somebody we have on site for the town to make sure that things are all going well?
A third-party inspector will be part of standard conditions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? I think we've covered it all.
I think so.
Yes. And so, we're going to continue this until July 11th, when I think we hope we can put this to bed.
You'll have all the stuff in, well, in advance for that celebration?
Yes.
Yes. All right, Patty?
So, I'm moved to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District for Drew Company Inc. at 247 Driftway until July 11, 2019, at 7:00 PM, and continue the time for action until July 31, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We'll send you, we'll send you this.
This is the last one of these. This is the accessory, well, yeah, which we have to wait until.
Yes, I'll entertain a motion to take a ten minute break. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can't give a support yet.
No, okay, we don't have to reconvene.
We're back on.
We can wait.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, layers on reports. Then we'll do minutes.
I went to the Housing Authority.
Yes.
And we just talked about, you know, they have one piece of property that they'd like to put maybe townhouses on, or one townhouse.
Where?
I don't remember where they said, but they want-
They want to put one townhouse on?
Yeah, so like, that's what they think can fit in it.
Uh huh.
You know, two separate units.
Like a duplex, then?
A duplex, right. And then, so they just really need to figure out how they're gonna get that built. Is, if another-
Meaning, meaning where they're gonna get the cash?
Yeah, and if another project comes through here, that could be part of what maybe the other project does.
Well, oh.
That was their thought, that's just something-
You mean as affordable housing?
Yeah. Oh, it would definitely be affordable housing.
But no, that becomes a component of a different project's affordable housing? Is that what you're saying?
Or mitigation.
Or mitigation, yeah. Well, the, at CPC, we had an update from, basically from the Housing Authority, and it had to do with the 30 affordable units lost in Green, which is behind Central Park.
Right.
And it's a 40B, a friendly 40B. The units are going to be just under 700 square feet, which part of me has a real problem with. They, they were rejected in the, in the first round of funding, and they're hoping to get into the second round of funding, which is this fall. And one of the things that was brought up by the review committee, the state, and this segues into, I think, the new senior center, is connectivity. They want this new project to be connected to the Central Park, to the library, to recreation. Excuse me. So, that in and of itself is very interesting, but-
Connected, meaning having transportation?
Walking. Well, that is walking.
They have to walk from Central School to the recreation, that's across that dangerous street.
See, we have to talk about that dangerous street.
Which dangerous street is this?
First Parish.
The most dangerous.
The most dangerous.
The most dangerous street, so there is that. And where have they, I wish you could remember, they said they were going to say this, I'll be there next week, and then I'll write it down, and I'll tell you, I'll report back.
But their funding comes from DHCD, or where does it come from? Mass Housing?
It comes from... So, some of it, it comes from different places.
Yeah, but when you say they missed the first round, is it with Mass Housing?
Yes.
So, that was, it just depends on what it is.
It's a, the 30 units Lawson Green is a quasi-public-private situation.
Right, but it's like a mortgage from Mass Housing.
Right, yeah.
And so, they missed the first round and they're waiting...
No, they were rejected in the first round.
They said they thought that was going to happen.
And they got rejected because they didn't have connectivity, is that what you're saying?
No, they didn't, that's the recommendation.
Sorry, I was trying to understand it.
Yeah, well, we're all trying to understand.
So, why did they get rejected?
Because there's more than one project going forward, so that one project might have gone forward that time, and...
So, they just fell below, they didn't get rejected, they just were below the line, basically.
Whoever, whoever doesn't get it is...
But we are, in terms of getting through to the next round, we are the most funded project because of 1. something million from CPC, and we're well, well-funded as opposed to a lot of these other projects. And so, they were, one of the other issues that they had was, whoa, why is there laundry in each unit? Why is there a central laundry location? Which was really silly. They were looking for things.
The Lawson Green, last time I looked at the plans before it got approved, it's right behind the Central Park, Central, so, you know, it had connectivity there. I don't know if it had a walk out, and there's no sidewalk, I don't believe, out on Branch Street, not on Branch Street, I mean, to, right, even to next door to the library. I don't think there is any sidewalk there.
Well, there's supposed to be.
It could be.
It could be, right, it could be, right.
I thought there was supposed to be, part of the library project.
There's a rear pathway, paved pathway.
Yeah, but where does that end up, that rear pathway?
In the parking lot.
In the parking lot of Central School.
Central School, okay.
It'll always be Central School, always.
And also, like everything else, the cost has gone up.
Why, why does it make a difference to have, just curious, central laundry versus in-unit laundries?
For community, so that people can talk to each other.
So, that they have to drag their laundry?
Yeah, it's a senior housing project. Yep. They're senior citizens dragging their laundry downstairs.
Right. That's too funny for words. All right, what else?
I went to Riverways, too, is that what I did?
And that was...
Waterways.
Waterways. We talked a lot about the river. We talked about dredging the harbor, that's going to commence soon, and that was right after the fire in the harbor, so that was a big discussion. And also, the shellfish farming.
What did they think of that?
So, they think it's good, and there's still, there's a couple, I didn't catch their names, but they seem to be trying to run, rate up all the regulations. There's an issue of how, whether they can use coacid to get to those beds, farm area, but it would not be for at least a year out. And CPC most likely will be involved in that agriculture.
Yeah, so, I'm the liaison to that, there's a committee, the Shellfish Advisor Committee. The meeting, I didn't reserve on a two-week schedule, I thought it was once a month, so I missed the meeting last night because I hadn't had it, and then the meeting before, I just couldn't, I couldn't make it, but like Rebecca said, they're working on kind of like their rules and regs, and there's kind of a lot of hoops that the town has to jump through with the Army Corps of Engineers, the Coast Guard, there's a lot of stuff because it's, you know, it's in an area that's for navigation, there's environmental and navigational issues.
There's probably marine fisheries, too, right?
Yep, 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 it's a lot, there's a lot of stakeholders in terms of the permitting, so they're working through rules and regs, and then also just logistics of how could some sort of commercial enterprise actually exist in this location, and, you know, there's a lot, there's some very motivated people that try to get this off the ground, but, but yeah.
It's great, they have a lot of energy, and they seem to be doing it.
Yeah, but so far, it's just like, you know, there's a lot of homework to do.
Well, they want to compete with Duxbury Loisters.
Yeah, and I mean, it would be a really good economic development piece for the town, and a way for the fishing industry to have supplemental income, I think, too.
So, also at CPC...
I see they're building a dog park.
Yes, the dog park is moving apace, and...
Just phase one.
Phase one, and then the roach field is almost done.
Yeah, so that...
A couple of other things, people, mostly it was about housing and the fields, the, an update on the fields, the contract has gone out, and they've put aside the concession stand, which came in at $550,000, and everybody just choked. So, they're, they're looking into alternative ways.
Trailer park over there.
Yeah, really, a double-wide.
Food truck.
What?
A food truck.
The food truck.
Yeah.
But the sad part about it is, you know, they want to put in bathrooms, and then they were talking about a project that had been done over in Waymouth, and they put in a concession stand, and they had sanitary facilities, and the kids trashed them. Now, what is that all about? I just don't understand how anybody can do that. So, that's about it, from, and then economic development, one of our members is in Ireland as we speak for the sister city project.
Wow, I have to get on that committee.
I could say.
You pay it for it?
We pay for it.
To go to Ireland?
They go to Ireland, we go down on Driftway.
Yeah, seriously. And there's a lot of Tony DiNani's there, quite a few people went. Yeah, and so, we're getting bags, recycle, the recycle bags that say Sea Citroen, and we're putting a kiosk down the harbor, and hopefully it's removable in case it floods.
Put it on pontoons.
Where's that going?
Okay, as you face the movie theater, and you're standing on the street, you look up and there's Nona's. There is a little indentation on the sidewalk, and that's where it's going, right there. So, it won't be in anybody's way, and that's, that's where it will be. Anybody else?
Traffic rules?
Yes.
They made, we talked, Drew Project, and we talked to the senior center, we have letters that become forthcoming on both, I think I sent you.
Mm-hmm.
They have the meeting, and they write the letter, and then at the following meeting, they vote to send it. This way, they voted to send it, they just haven't finished it yet.
Oh.
I will send you the traffic rules recommendation for the senior center tomorrow. We got a letter, we got a memo earlier this week.
And do we want to, at some point, well, this can come up when the senior center comes in, a peer review on the traffic?
Have they done a peer review on it? They haven't done a study.
We're going to ask them to do a study?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not going to accept it without a study, right?
Right now, I only have engineering peer review for the, pretty much the drainage going on for the senior center right now. They have some stuff for the, I mean, we can send you, we can send you everything we have on traffic right now. They did a, like, a five-page, we have a five-page memo on traffic.
Aye.
I think the consultant was Pare, P-A-R-E, New Pare, Inc.
So, is this beyond the pale to ask that the facilities director be present for the review of the senior center? It is a public building, he is in charge of it supposedly?
Well, I'm assuming the town's going to have somebody here, right?
Let's hope that we, if we invite somebody, maybe somebody will definitely come.
I mean, I think that, I think the Council on Aging will be here. I mean, I can, I can bring the, I can bring that up on Tuesday when we have a...
Who's going to own it? The town?
The town.
So, who's ultimately responsible for it? For the design and construction of it? Is that the DPW, or is that...
Public Buildings.
Public Building Commission, I mean.
Yeah, but they don't...
And right now, we have a, right now, they have an OPM. The town has hired an OPM to oversee the construction and the design.
And who does that OPM work for?
At the town, I believe.
Oh, but who in town?
I think the Council on Aging.
I think it would be the facilities director.
I don't know who the OPM was.
I think whoever has...
I'm just sending stuff to, I mean, to the OPM and the architect.
I'm just saying that whoever has oversight authority for this project in the town ought to be here, not just send their project manager, their third-party project manager, right? That's, it's the same thing as the DPW sending, you know, the engineers they hired, right?
Well, I believe, I mean, the OPM was at some of the informal meetings we've had with the senior center, so I would imagine they will be here the night of the, of the public hearing. I will, we have a DRT meeting on Tuesday, I will ask about maintenance, and if somebody, I'll ask that and raise those questions so that the appropriate people can be at the public hearing on the 27th.
I think a lot of the questions we want, the department head is not going to be able to answer.
And the other thing is, as we ran into issues with public safety and what have you, who is in charge of making sure that this building is done correctly? Who's overseeing all of it?
I would assume the OPM, but I mean...
No, the OPM works for somebody. They're just hired, right, but, so who's hiring them? Who's paying the bills, right? And who's he responsible to, right?
And where's the oversight?
Who's the applicant? It's not the OPM, right? It's the town, and somebody in the town is responsible for it. Is it the town administrator?
The application says the Council on Aging and the town of Citroen.
Okay, so, a representative from both would be perfect.
So...
Absolutely.
I mean, we expect a developer to show up for these kinds of projects, I think we should expect that.
I will be leaving at some point in the next two weeks with the town administrator on the senior center.
Okay.
And some other people, other internal people in town.
What we want to try to avoid is having just the OPM here saying, well, I don't know, that's a town decision, right? So, we want somebody who's part of the town decision-making process to be here, to at least absorb the information, they can go away and make it, tell us what decision they'd like to make, but...
All right, I will, I will put that, I will duly note that, I know that the Council on Aging Director will be here.
That's good.
But I don't know, I don't know who else yet. I know that we will be getting more information in because I have asked for more information, and so we'll be getting some type of cover letter for the project in the next, in the next two weeks before the hearing.
It would be good if they gave you a, an org chart of responsibility or something that showed who's ultimately, where does the buck stop?
Yeah, who's in charge? We need the leader. Who's the leader? Minutes, do we have any minutes?
And I have a...
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, it's fine.
Just before we leave, I, I don't know if you've communicated it to whoever, maybe you have, but I'm expecting a traffic study. So, if they haven't done a traffic study, and they come in here, then one of the things I'm going to say is, okay, where's the traffic study, right? If we don't have it, well, go away and get it and come back, right? This is too big a project not to have something like that.
It's intended to be parking and traffic.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, I would agree with you, right? But it's the same thing we expect of all these other big projects, I don't expect any less on this, right? I mean, we asked for it for the school, right? So...
I will make this clear in my meeting.
There is some that feel that, since we voted on this at the election, that July 1st, they're going to dig a hole and put it in, and I've got news for them. It's happening. They are, why they never came to us, are asked, it wasn't until I asked them to come in here that we ever saw anything about the senior center. They even went to the PTOs to talk about what they were doing. That made a lot of sense.
Well, does it make sense to also...
Okay, we can talk to whoever we want.
They need to talk to us.
At some point.
Does it make sense to also invite recreation to the meeting, since they are part of this locus? I mean, they are, they are in the facility, and if they're going to be sharing facilities...
I agree with you. Are they going to do both at one time, or are they just going to do that building?
No.
It's the, it's the senior center plus the elevator for the recreation.
Recreation.
Recreation, it will be invited to the internal meeting.
On, to your point, I would add that whoever is, whoever the care and custody of Old Gate School, it should come, too, because that's also on that site.
Yes, it's the entire...
I don't know who's in charge of that building anymore, but it's there.
Is it a school department?
I don't know.
No, it's the town. It went from the school to the town one day they moved.
So, somewhere in this vast organization, it must rise to somebody who's got responsibility.
Tell you to build a campus, right? Just get all the stakeholders together.
Right.
We have, if you would like to pick up your drawings tonight, we have them available so that you can take them home tonight, if you would like, so that you can start your review. This is a large file, I mean, so if you want it on Dropbox, we can send it to you by Dropbox, but we have hard copies here as well.
I will, I will take the hard copies, but please provide a Dropbox link.
I mean, we can send out the stuff earlier. If you want the stuff earlier, then we can send it out, you know, next week, in the beginning of the week for, for that.
Okay. Ben?
Yeah, I've seen Water Resources meets next week, so I don't have anything on that Water Resource Committee, but in terms of the master plan, some of you may have seen that Brad, this, that scheduled the first advisory committee, advisory committee has been put together, and the first meeting for that is July 2nd, the evening of July 2nd, I think it's a Tuesday night, and obviously for all of the master plan stuff, as many of the, it's all open meeting and everything, so as many of the planning board members can attend is encouraged, but...
And where is it? At the library?
I think the location is to be, no, it is in the library, you're right, yeah, it's in the library, yeah.
Okay, great.
I imagine there'll be no votes that night or anything?
I don't, I don't think so, but that's something to discuss with Brad. Brad...
Do we need to post it?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, it's an advisory committee, what's it, what's it going to vote on?
Brad and the consultants did say that everything has to be done, open meeting, so it will have to be posted.
I'm going to post it anyways.
Just post it.
I mean, I think we'll post to be added abundance of caution.
There was an email.
Yeah, I got, I got an email on it.
I saw an email.
It's a, hopefully, it's early enough that we'll get people...
It's that week, some people take...
That's the July 4th.
July 4th week.
But that one is not, like, it's, they're not soliciting public feedback at that one. And then I think the main, the big public hiccup means probably won't be until August. I think we're going to try to time it like somewhere towards Heritage Days.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting minutes for May 23rd, 2...
But that one is not, like, it's, they're not soliciting public-
No, it's just organization.
Feedback at that one. And then I think the main, the big public hiccup means probably won't be until August. I think we're gonna try to time it like somewhere towards Heritage Days.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting minutes for May 23rd, 2019.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of $1,691 to CEI for peer review for 60 Country Way, for $1,050 to the town of Citew for 27 Hood Road, for $14.50 to Brad Washburn for mileage reimbursement, for $16,520.65 to Horsley Witten Group for peer review inspections at Seaside and Citew, for $750 to Merrill Corporation for peer review of 4 Union Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Planning and Development Report.
All right, I have a couple items. Um, one of them is, does the board want to sponsor the article that was the citizen petition from, for Hummerock? Do you wanna sponsor that for a fall town meeting? It would be essentially, it would be the same article, same wording.
Uh, this is the one in the Marina you're talking about?
Yes.
And, and what, what happened? I wasn't at the town meeting when that was discussed. What happened?
It was derailed.
For what reason?
Um, it was personal.
It was indefinitely, the applicant indefinitely postponed.
And, and they asked for it to be postponed for the planning board to study. And so, um, it was indefinitely postponed.
Per their, per their request of the board selectman, I would say.
Right, yeah. I mean, it was, it was kinda withdrawn to the board select, I mean, for the planning board to study. But the, we've met with the applicant and they want to know if the planning board would be willing to sponsor this article, whereas in the fall, in the spring town meeting, it was a citizen petition.
The only issue with that is the powers that be don't like to do zoning in the fall special town meeting.
We're doing it at their request.
What?
We're doing it at their request.
At whose request? The selectmen?
Sure.
I would say if we have to study it, so let's study it, right? I mean, what do we have to do?
We've already studied it.
I mean, what, my understanding of the history is, is that this, a bylaw change was proposed in 2007, 2008 and the app, um, and it included this parcel in this Hummerock overlay district. And the owner at that time wanted the parcel removed. He didn't want it in the overlay district. And so at the last minute, uh, the consultant that was hired for that had recommended it be in it. They removed it and the, the article passed. So now there's a new owner and they want it in the overlay district.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm asking is, so, so what's the counterargument to that? Why, why is somebody saying, "Don't put it in the overlay district"?
We, we thought it was fine when it came in front of the planning board.
Right.
No, I, I hear you. I'm, I'm trying to under, I wasn't at the town meeting, so I'm trying to understand what the objection was there.
It was, the objection was that they felt that the citizens petition was not properly vetted by the planning board prior to going to town meeting.
However, you had the requisite public hearings, et cetera, and you wrote a report in support of it.
So there was no-
Yeah, there was-
No information about why we shouldn't do it or should do it? Nobody presented any of that?
It, 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 it was personal.
I'm just asking if somebody said, "There's a reason why it shouldn't be done," right?
We couldn't come up with a reason.
Okay.
It was not a reason. It was, um, a little nasty.
It was surprising.
What's surprising?
Definitely was surprising.
It was really surprising.
It was pulled at the very last minute.
So if you're willing to sponsor it, I mean, we're, we will ask the applicant to still do all the work, but it would just be, you know, sponsored by the planning board. I can get you, I mean, we can schedule a time if you'd like to have them come in. We can have them come in and explain it to you again, if, if that's what you'd like. But I mean, they're just asking if the board would be willing to sponsor it.
Well, how do you all feel? How would you be willing to sponsor it?
I'm fine with it as long as it doesn't detract from any of our other responsibilities or potential zoning things we might, that might be more important for us.
Okay, that's good.
What else is on the, would be on the agenda that we would, might sponsor? Anything?
We have a number of things we need to start working on, but there's-
So what, what would they be?
Lack of, lack of time to get to any of these because we're, um, very busy with project work. Um, you've talked about rat tails.
Ugh, rat tails.
You've, you've talked about rat tails. You, um, a sign bylaw needs to come in and be revamped. Um, those are, we've talked about, there's been a large concern in the town lately about lot coverage. Um, and it's, I, people are saying lot coverage, um, FAR, floor area ratio, but, um, there's growing concern that, um, you can build a 3,000 square foot house on a 5,000 square foot lot. And so some of these items, you know, we have to start, we have to start addressing, you know, one by, one by one.
And we can also try again, um, and hopefully it wouldn't be at 2 o'clock in the morning, this whole idea of accessory apartments and we end up with a house, two houses on one lot. We tried to not have that happen and Tibbetts and Joe Joyce basically deep-sixed it.
So, I mean, there, there's a number of issues that we have. It's just that you have to put some time into all of these and when we're, um, we're extremely busy with project work. Plus, um, we still need to work on the stormwater regulations. And right now, the ball is in the developers' court. Um, I met a while ago with, um, Mr. Bjorkland and they, he's, um, some of his other fellow, um, engineers were supposed to get him information. They haven't. He understands the ball is in his court. Um, but, you know, we wanted to try to finish that and get the public hearing for that sometime. But, you know, I, nothing's gonna happen in the next month. I mean, the workload is just such that-
No, I was thinking more about, you know, sort of our, our political capital, if you will, and what we're working on and sponsoring. I guess I'm not, I'm not gonna go to the mat for this overlay district change, right?
And that's why they did a citizen petition before.
Right.
And so if, I mean, they're basically saying if they do all the work, like it was a citizens petition, but have the planning board sponsor it.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's, it's not one I would put any significant effort into, I guess. I, I don't see, does somebody else see the value in that?
No.
No?
To the extent that we created the, the problem, I think we should make a fair effort to uncreate it.
Or no.
And when the reason it was created or taken out was for expediency to get the whole, the rest of the bylaw passed. So we gave that small piece up for work.
But that person didn't want it in there.
We took it out.
Okay.
We excluded it, so it wasn't it.
What's the likely impact of it being approved?
Sorry, say it again?
What's the likely impact if it's, if the change is approved? Are we gonna build a whole set of condos and stuff over there?
I think so.
Yeah, yes. Along with, there would likely be, uh, development there and, um, although we've been told they don't have a plan, we've asked to see a plan. We've asked for the, for them to generate a, a concept plan that, that obviously if they're asking it to be put in this overlay district, we would have a housing component. And we've asked that, you know, that the Marina part would still stay there in some way, shape or form and there would be some business there too, is what we are told. So it would, it would be, I mean, they, they tell us it would be beneficial to the neighborhood. To have, I mean, they're considering possibly a restaurant, which would bring some vibrancy, you know, to some of the, to that area. But you do have, you, I mean, you do have the Sands, um, the Voyage there and you have some other stuff there.
As I recall, some of the neighbors were there, right? They came that night?
Yeah, I mean-
They seemed fine, right?
Nobody seemed to oppose it, um, when you had your public hearing. Nobody, nobody spoke in opposition to it.
Yeah, um, I'm just thinking through about what, what would happen, right?
That's what happened.
So we would end up, so would that result in a lot of town infrastructure going over there? Like water and sewer?
I believe they already have. Um, they have septic there. They don't have sewer. I believe all of Hummerock, Hummerock is on septic.
Yes, and then water comes from Majville.
And a new development there would need a new wastewater treatment system of some kind?
Yeah.
How did they do the other condos? Did they have a-
I don't know.
Package system or something?
I, I-
I was thinking of all this infrastructure over there, low-line area, that ultimately we're all gonna be saying, "Should we move this stuff now?"
Well, and I think that's part of, I think that's a legitimate concern. Um, and I think that, um, that, that's an underlying concern of any planning in that area. You know, you have a, it's a barrier beach and, you know, um-
And all the residents didn't want, or most of them did not want, um, a sacrificial dune or whatever the town had proposed to save Hummerock. So that money went away. There's quite a bit of money.
I mean, do you want me to ask them to come in and talk to you? I mean, I can schedule a time, but I don't see how we can schedule a time till late July.
I think we should put, if they want to do this for the fall town meeting, we have so much on our plate right now that they can do their, they've already done the work. They can do the petition and get themselves on in sep- in the fall and we can sponsor it in the spring. Because that's when the selectmen want zoning on in the spring. They don't want it in the fall.
Right, but you, you potentially have a signed bylaw that needs to go on, on a fall town meeting because you have, you have, you know, some, you have a case, you know-
I know.
A case law that from, you know, um, a couple of years ago where the Supreme Court made a, you know, ruling and some of your sign, some portions of the signed bylaw are not in conformance. So I think you're potentially doing zoning anyways.
Let's put them on the agenda for an hour.
Yep.
And then make a decision there as to whether we're gonna support them or not.
Okay, so- That's a good compromise.
Can I put it, can I ask them to come in late July because your meetings are, we're getting a little bit-
They could come in August or September if they want.
Well, the problem with that though is it has to do with the warrant opening and closing, right?
Right, and that's always a tricky thing. We don't, we all, I'll ask, I'll schedule them for, for July 25th and they come in and they can talk to you.
Okay.
Express purpose of determining whether we're gonna support them or not.
Right. All right, so, um, at your next meeting, um, Toll Brothers will be coming in to ask to be going into Phase 2. They are in the process right now, in your folders, you'll have a proposal that I sought, to go for construction observation from Horsley Witten. And, um, it's pretty much full-time construction observation for the first two weeks and then pretty much no less than three days a week. Most of the time it's three days a week thereafter for the, for the cor- duration of the Phase 2, pretty much site work. They're still in Phase 1, so there would be some overlapping. They are, the binder is all down for, um, the Phase 1 roads. They, um, have indicated they've stable, um, they will be stabilizing or have stabilized with tackifier or something, the building pads. We have about, I don't know, 14, probably about 20 units being constructed out there right now. The, um, earthwork is lar- a lot, large part of the cuts and fills are all done and there's a lot of fine, um, fine grating and looming, looming and seeding going on. We are going out there to be staking some of the buffer this week. And hopefully they will, they're working on the basins. And hopefully they will be getting some type of interim ass built to conservation, and planning in the next, uh, you know, week or so to show that they are ready to go into Phase 2.
When, when do they come in to talk to us?
The 27th, your next meeting.
All right, I'd like to go out there before the 27th and actually physically walk this.
I am going out there on the 26th. And I've arranged for our consulting engineer, um, well, we're meeting our consulting engineer out there. So if, I, obviously whoever wants to go can go, but if I need to post a meeting for a site walk, I'll post a meeting for a site walk.
What day of the week is it?
It's a Wednesday.
I wanted to go on the Wednesday, the day before the here, the meeting.
I want to go on that.
So that-
What time is it?
I haven't set it up yet. So if you have a restriction, let me know and-
First thing in the morning is best for me.
What do you consider first thing?
Six.
Oh, cut it out. How about 9:00 AM?
It's light by 6 o'clock.
I don't think I can get our consulting engineer off at that time.
How, how early can you get him there?
I can call him up tomorrow and ask him. I mean, I think 9 o'clock?
Oh, no, 8 o'clock. 8 o'clock, the, the morning's half over by 8 o'clock. 8:15.
I will call, I will find out. What, your preference is 8 o'clock?
That's my preference. That's mine, but-
I don't know where our consulting engineer is coming from.
Okay.
And traffic these days is pretty horrific.
No, it's 6 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, yes, it is.
Oh, well, if he's coming from a long way, he's gonna have to leave at like 5.
Okay.
How, how many people wanna be there on the 26th?
I don't know if I can, but-
Should post that as a-
I'm gonna post a site walk. I mean, yeah, I'm just-
So you think he can't be there till 9? Is that what you're saying?
I will call him up and ask him what time he wants to be there.
Try to do it at least 8:30, right? I am. I would be there at 6.
All right, so, um, I will, I'll let you know. I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Currys Estates, they, um, have indicated that the gas started on 6:10. They're working on cleaning out the, um, the basin was, basin floor was dry the other day. Uh, they're working on cleaning out the silt in that and, um, but hopefully they got it done before the rain of this week. Two lots are under construction, um, two more building permits. I, I believe I signed off on two more building permits this week. 27 Hood Road, that's the, uh, Cottick Church. At your July 11th meeting, you'll be voting a formal withdrawal of the application. Um, the application is going to con- is been filed with conservation. They, um, they found some wetlands out there and so it's in the 100-foot buffer zone. So we switched the whole thing to conservation for the stormwater and, um-
Was that just a stormwater permit?
It's been filed, I mean, there's some work that was done in the 100-foot buffer zone for some, um, part of the tanks. Maybe, I think it was propane and et cetera pads for the accessory dwelling. And then the keel part, um, part of that's in the 100-foot buffer zone. So it's all going to conservation. So that's why they're withdrawing from us. We- We had continued our hearing until the eleventh. They were waiting a while to get squared away with DEP and the wetlands, so now it's determined it's there.
Okay.
Um, supposedly in the next two weeks, there's gonna be a pre-construction meeting for the, um, for the fields. You've required one as part of your permit and, um, they've been reaching out to try to get a, get, you know, us to schedule a date. But my understanding is the work is intending to commence, um, plus or minus July first.
Okay.
And so that's where we are right now, um, you know, remaining very busy.
And what happened with all those, um, site plan review things that were filed the last time? Is the clock ticking on all those, those imaginary site-
Subdivisions, the subdivisions?
The preliminaries that came in here, the four of them?
The imaginary.
Well, yes, because they have, there's, from the time you file a preliminary plan to the time you file a definitive plan, if they decide that that's what they're going to do, use that, use, um, potentially use the old zoning. If they, um, they have to file within that seven-month time period.
So when is, I'm just asking, when is, when is that? Do they file those things in May?
They filed them in March.
In March?
They had to, 'cause they filed before the, um, they had to file before the April first date, um, and before town meeting. We don't know yet how the attorney, or how the Attorney General is gonna act. Attorney General's deadline, ninety days is plus or minus July eleventh.
But they have to act by like September or October?
Right, right.
Or they're automatically-
Out.
Out, right, okay.
So that's where I think we are right now. You'll have, next time you'll have the Senior Center, Wells seventeen A, um, Toll Brothers and probably an A and R.
Did Toll Brothers file a DEP?
No, they haven't finalized the documentation yet.
Really?
I mean, they've, they've completed the remediation, they've done whatever stuff, but I don't believe that they have gotten a final report into DEP.
Ask them that question before the 27th, right?
We put some more, they put some more monitoring wells out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because of the, um, the additional soil area.
Yeah.
And they're coming up fine. They, they intend, it's on their list to, you know, get done. I mean, but they have to, they're following the protocol is what they said. And I think by, by tomorrow, um, the turtle, the turtle study should be, the time out in the field looking for the turtles from conservation should be done.
Can you find any?
I don't know.
Do they find any?
I don't know.
I think they're probably buried by now.
I, I think we would have heard potentially a case.
They got shipped out with the waste material they dug up?
Yeah. Well, they were only on the, they were doing the turtle part in Phase Two area.
Right.
All right, it's nine o'clock, it'll be witching hour. And we have a public hearing, special permit accessory dwelling at sixty-seven Old Oak and Bucket Road. And the applicant is Erin McMurra and Patrick Donahue. So if y'all wanna come forward, please.
Hello?
Hi. Good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name is Maureen Hurley and I am representing the applicant Erin McMurra and her husband Patrick Donahue. The parcel is located at sixty-seven Old Oak and Bucket Road and the assesses parcel is fifty-two dash two dash forty-four. They're requesting an accessory dwelling special permit and have submitted a number of documents. And in the process of reviewing the documents that they submitted, and I didn't review the application before it was submitted, but I am now representing the applicant. I noticed that there is not a site plan in the documents that, um, should be here that shows the location of the new structure in the driveway. So I know that they will have to continue to get that site plan. And I will tell you a little bit about the history of what they've been trying to do here and I think that might explain things a little better if I can find them. So they bought the parcel in two thousand seventeen and they have a young son. And their intent was for mom, Donna McMurra here, who's a fifty-year resident of the situet and just sold her home in two thousand seventeen. Her intent was to move into, there was a barn on the property. So they retained Greg Morse and Greg Morse took a look at that. And I have here, maybe I should walk up so you can see it?
Yeah, please, yeah, sure.
So this was kind of a draft that Greg and I were talking prior to, um, what happened before. So the, this is the home, the existing home right here. And there's a barn right over here. And so the plan was to put the accessory dwelling special permit in this barn. But as you can see, the barn is too close to the lot line. It should be fifteen, there's a fifteen-foot side yard setback and up here it's only ten feet. So after talking to Greg, and so the issue is when you do this new, um, accessory dwelling special permit, you have to comply with the side yard setback and there's no way that this could. So the plan was to purchase a strip of land from the abutting parcels. And the two neighbors said that they were willing to do that. And he went forward and actually drew the plans and then one of the neighbors backed out at the last minute. So my clients actually had an architectural plan done for that. And when that fell through, they were very disappointed.
How long has that been there?
The barn? That's an issue we're trying to figure out.
Since eighty-six.
We pulled the, um, the zoning term and, um, yeah, so it doesn't, it doesn't pre-exist, is that what you were thinking about?
Yeah, I was wondering whether it's pre-existing condition. Or whether the zoning board could-
Wouldn't matter.
Is that the garage?
Well, the zoning board could give them a variance.
Well, it must meet all the requirements of a current building.
Even if the zoning board gave them a variance?
Yes. Yeah, so-
Specifically written into the bylaw. So that's why the barn can't be used as an accessory dwelling.
It's actually section five thirty-two D. It says an accessory dwelling associated with a single-family house must be located within the interior of and under the same roof as a single-family house structure or in a structure attached there too. Or in a detached structure on the same lot that complies with all required setback, building height and yard requirements for a primary structure. So that just couldn't do it.
No exceptions.
Yeah, so that couldn't do it. We talked, they talked to the building inspector and, um, this was the plan, was to do this. It would have been the best, but unfortunately couldn't be done. So my clients then went forward and talked to an architect and he designed a, a new home. So they're gonna do a, the accessory dwelling special permit and have a driveway come in and this new structure's going to be right here. He actually drew it, the architect, but he didn't have Greg Morse put it on the site plan. So he did it, he sort of superimposed it on Greg's plan. But again, I know that you need to have it on here and you have to have it, so we're gonna have to continue in any event to get that. But my thought was we could maybe go forward and if you had any other questions, we could, um, address those for when we come back. And I don't know when the next time the board would be willing to hear it. I don't know if two weeks is too fast or are you all booked up two weeks from now?
That's a very busy night.
Is it?
Was there a question about the septic, Karen?
Yes, I mean, so, and, and because you need the plot plan for the building permit, you need the plot plan anyway.
Yeah, right.
We didn't make a big deal about that, but they will need that for the building permit. Board of Health commented today that, um, they don't have a current plan in our file. So they don't really know how, where the septic system is in relationship to the-
The plan.
To the property lines, et cetera. Um, they say that the, the house has two bedrooms because they took down a wall. Um, and that kind of all has to be given to the Board of Health. Joan said she was gonna call, um, somebody today and talk to, talk to somebody.
Was that you? Oh, okay. But didn't you talk to someone at the Board of Health?
This was about five or six weeks ago.
Well, she was gonna call today again because, um, you know, she wrote to me that she, we only have a two thousand and sixteen Title V report that indicates the home has three bedrooms and the septic is designed for three bedrooms. So we will need to, need design plan on the home to verify only, um, two bedrooms. So I think you need to get in touch with the Board of Health and cross, cross off some stuff there so that then she can write us a clean, a clean comment letter that says they complied with all their stuff at the Board of Health.
Okay, I did talk to them about five or six weeks ago and they had me go over to Bob Vogel, the building creationer. And he told me just to draw a dotted line across the plan that I submitted showing where the wall was taken down on the first floor.
But the thing is, they don't have anything, they don't even have, I don't think, I don't think they have a plan of where your septic system is located.
Right, and that is on Greg's, but this is an old plan, it's not the one. So this, that can be addressed too when Greg submits the plan, the site plan. Is it, because he's already got it located on here.
So, so there's an issue that we've gotten comments from, I think, four of the abutting neighbors, that they're all in support of the project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, nobody seems to have any issues. It seems like there's a lot of technicalities here. This project is in the Water Resource Protection District too. So under the zoning requirements that the first inch of the roof water has to be infiltrated. Um, no slopes steeper than twenty-five percent. Infiltration devices have to be, um, three feet above estimated seasonal high groundwater. And we would wanna know where some type of erosion control is so stuff doesn't go out on, in the street.
Okay, and would Greg, Greg would be able to put that on the plan also, right?
He can put that on the plan and he would need to verify that there's no, uh, it's not a twenty-five percent increase in impervious area or disturbance of fifteen thousand square feet because then a separate stormwater permit would be needed. But we can, we will still condition the accessory dwelling to have erosion control and all that kind of stuff. It's just part of good construction standards.
Okay, the one thing more I should note is that the barn that is here, that's too close to the lot line, the plan is that that's gonna come down. So that will be gone when the new structure is built. And so the architect mentioned that, you know, the runoff that's from that roof now, this is gonna be a smaller dwelling in the barn that's being taken down. So, but we'll have Greg get that on the plan.
Doesn't look like you're gonna get anywhere near fifteen thousand square feet. I mean, the driveway by itself's a thousand.
But, but, I mean, disturbance.
Yeah, but I mean, you have to go a long way to get to fifteen.
And we know it has a high groundwater table there, so we, we want some methods to, you know, protect during construction.
Well, I think the Board of Health wants to make sure too.
And the Board of Health wants to know where the septic system is and, um, make sure everything's okay.
Mm-hmm.
So could, is there, could we get a copy of what the Board of Health submitted? I can get it tomorrow, if that's okay?
Yeah, it's, it's just an email.
Okay, so it just says where is the septic located?
Um, we, we will need to have a septic plan in relation to setbacks, et cetera.
Okay.
I, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You probably just need to give it to your engineer because I think they have specific requirements in the Board of Health about what that septic plan has to be, right? Or how it has to be verified and all of that, so. You're better off just coordinating with them.
And the, the new, the new structure will meet all setbacks, so will comply with zoning.
Okay.
There's no problem with anything on there.
And it's a single, a single bedroom?
Yes, yeah. You do have that, right, the architectural?
Yeah, I'm looking at it now.
Yep.
Garage, so it's got some parking. And it'll be on a separate, um, water line?
Yes, we received a comment from the Water Department, says it has to be a separate water line, um, water hook up being required as well.
Oh, yes, we have elevations, hardly ever get that.
It's gonna have storage above and I believe the plan showed that there is-
This is Peter McGough from the Toll House.
Are there any questions from the board at this moment? Okay, Bill?
No.
What's the square, I'm sorry, what's the square footage on it?
Seven forty-seven point two five gross, six ninety-three.
Has it compared to the, um, what's the percentage?
It's about forty-six, forty-six to forty-nine percent, but, but it's less than seven hundred and fifty.
Seven fifty, yeah, okay.
So it's allowable by right.
Okay.
Karen? Steve?
I think, it sounds like the Board of Health stuff is probably the key stuff at this point.
All right, um, so you have your homework.
Things you have to do.
When can we put the bag on again?
How long do you wanna, um, allow for Drew on the eleventh?
Give him an hour.
Do you think that's enough? No, it's gonna take an hour to just read the stuff.
An hour to just read the stuff. I mean, I was thinking an hour and a half. I mean, they need some time to go over with you the issues. We will have a draft decision, um, that's been vetted, hopefully like we did with Toll. And, um, but I think you're gonna need at least an hour and a half.
All right, who's on that night? Is Toll there too, on the eleventh?
Right now it's just Toll. Um, no, no, it's just Drew.
So-
No, we should be able to fit this in, right?
Right.
Okay.
That, that should be okay, right?
Cause we gotta go through with Drew, we gotta go through all waivers, what may be hidden in there.
Well, hopefully they're gonna send us something ahead of time and says, these are the waivers they're requesting, right?
Then we physically have to go through whether we vote each one.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, let me ask you this and, and you're the one that I'm gonna-
Uh-oh.
Yeah, here it comes.
Can you start at eight?
AM, could we start-
Six AM would be good.
Could we start at six thirty on the eleventh? So that we could do the accessory apartment at, um, six thirty because it's not gonna take all that long. And then we have Drew and if there's a Form A or anything else afterwards, fine. What do you think?
Uh, so far it looks okay. I will try to do it.
Thank you.
That would be wonderful.
Can, can everybody else do it?
I'm not gonna be here on the eleventh.
It's okay.
Yeah. Anybody else, we know everyone else will be here.
Well, all, the rest of us will be here. Okay, um, it'll be the eleventh of July, seven eleven. At six thirty. And you will have until seven thirty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Can I read that, please?
Okay, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue in a public hearing for the accessory dwelling special permit at sixty-seven Old Oak Bucket Road until seven, till July eleventh, two thousand nineteen at six thirty PM and to continue the time for action provided with the town court until July thirty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I need to know, is anybody gonna, you're gone on the eleventh, anybody else leaving town this summer?
No.
I printed this out, this is two.
Depends on who's chasing you.
I don't know yet.
Toll Brothers.
Okay. The big one is the eleventh.
Of July?
Of July. And you won't be here, but you wouldn't be able to go on it anyway.
But your input is valuable.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
But you won't be here. There's Felicia. There you go. We're off, right, probably still on?
No.
No.
All right, is there anything else this evening?
No.
I'll like to take Bill's motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Are we all set? We're off.
You want me to take you to view?
We're done.
Awesome. I usually listen for the meaning of your bid.
We just did that.
That's Bill's motion. He does it, no one.
That's Bill's motion.
That's Bill's motion.